All right, calling to order. And the pledge of allegiance, this is the Eastline Board of Selectmen regular meeting of January seventeenth, 2024, in the upper meeting room, NVO.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its standing, one nation, undeguised, individual, liberty, justice, and sprawl.
Are there any additional agenda and consent calendar items? Being none, we'll move on to delegations. Are there any public delegations tonight? If you just state your name and address to the record, please.
Sure. Greg McIntyre, forty-one Shore Road, Niantic. I wanted to address the Board of Selectmen tonight about something that happened last It kind of felt like democracy was hijacked last night. I think that's what happened at the meeting of the Special Zoning Commission last night. By that, I mean, we had an election last November where the voters did not support a certain candidate for zoning commission. She lost. And however, here we are two months later, and that candidate is back in a full-time position on the zoning commission. I find that really intolerable. It completely ignores the interests of the voters, and they sent a message when they didn't reelect her. I had a lot more written down, but what I would like to say is, there were a number of candidates who could have filled that position. None of them were contacted before the meeting last night, and they were not allowed, really, to speak and present their case last night. Those candidates include Daniel Glenn, who's a Bachelor of Architecture from Rhode Island, Rhode Island School of Design; John Vilcek, who spent a career in submarines in the Navy; Kathy Yuhas, who was a nurse for thirty-five years in many different places. Any one of these people could easily have executed the position on the zoning commission. However, the zoning commission saw a fit to quickly renominate and elect the person who had been in the election and lost for that seat. The optics alone are terrible. Because of that, I cannot envision myself working productively with that current commission. Therefore, I'm withdrawing my name for nomination to that alternate position. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Are there any additional delegations? Yes. Gentleman in the blue sweater. Again, if you could identify yourself for the record, please, and your address.
John Vilcek, four Meadow Street, Niantic. I concur with my esteemed colleague. I thought the same thing, that I'm putting in an application, I'd like to be on the zoning board, and I'll give some reasons. And I also thought about the colleagues on the board that you have referred to, and it's seems unseemly to me a little bit because of the way the optics came about. However, there are some other individuals on that commission that I have great respect for, so I've decided to continue my possibility of being appointed. I've been a resident of Niantic for forty-eight years, a homeowner for forty-eight years. I spent twenty-nine years in the Navy, served in Groton at the subbase, I served in NATO and Belgium, I served in various parts of the United States, predominantly in the submarine force. I taught submarine officers at submarine school, I was responsible for classified material and cryptographic organizations and communications. And I think that kind of gives me a stability, maturity, and the ability to make good decisions, which I think is appropriate for that committee, for that commission. I spent an additional nineteen years with phone companies, SNET, bought by another company, ending up with AT&amp;T. I was a technician, I was a manager, I became a disaster recovery specialist, dealing with worldwide divisions of AT&amp;T, and building business continuity plans to keep the phone company running, continuity. In the Navy, I also spent some time as the officer in charge of a Navy communications facility outside of Annapolis, Maryland. It was a hundred and fifty-three acres, we had a hundred and ten personnel, we had family housing, individual bachelor housing, I had a public works department. Basically, it was a small town, it was a village town, much smaller than Niantic or Eastlime, but it was a small village. And I think, performing those duties, understanding the concept of an urban environment, I put forth my name as a candidate for the zoning commission. And I thank you for your time.
Excuse me, Mr. Vilcek, could you identify your party affiliation, please?
It's Democrat.
Thank you very much. We have to pay attention to minority representation.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other delegations tonight?
Can you guys hear me all right with the mask on?
Yes.
And I hope Ms. Carlson, oh, sorry.
If you can identify yourself.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I just want to make sure that Ms. Carlson and Ms. Chikalo can hear me okay, too, on Zoom. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. All right, it's Nick Menapease, thirty-eight Hope Street. I wanted to speak tonight, similar to some of the previous gentlemen who just spoke, about some issues that are not on the agenda. One is what seems like an effort by certain members of this board, as well as other boards and commissions, to try and silence dissent on matters related to the appointment of citizens to positions. Repeatedly, I have seen that certain committees have prevented people from speaking on agenda items and made sure that appointing members to the board or commission is one of those items. It seems that certain officials view appointing people as a way to change elections and get what they want while disregarding voters. Matter of fact, the ex officio de zoning, who is Ms. Hardy, specifically said that she wanted to do this at the zoning meeting on January fourth, I believe it was, to prevent people from speaking about this very nomination tonight. I know that we are dealing with a lot of undemocratic forces in this country, and I hope none of you are part of that increasingly treasonous element. Excuse me. Sorry about that. But when elected officials tried to undo elections to put their political friends into power, it certainly appears that they decided that elections do not matter. We already get the huge advantage to certain elected officials because of our town's minority representation rule. In case anyone was not aware, a party slate is limited from having too much control over election boards or commissions. That's why when Dr. Greg McIntyre received the most votes for zoning alternate in the two thousand and twenty-three election, he could not take the seat because at the time, that would violate minority representation rules when it comes to the zoning alternates. I hope that the majority of the members of this board believe in democracy and not cronyism, because that is exactly what we saw last night on the zoning commission. The only reason to call a meeting for yesterday was to circumvent this board's appointment of an alternate tonight. They did not want you to pick, appoint someone who they did not like and might not vote the way they wanted. The election we had in November was a free, fair, and just election, but because some people didn't like the results, that should not mean that they get to just change those to be what they do and undo what the voters wanted. On a related note, I must say that I did not appreciate being threatened by elected representatives. I emailed Acting Zoning Chair Nancy Colal a question about the Aquifer, unrelated to this whatsoever. And she responded with a message that I will quote here. Ah, sorry. Sorry. You are welcome to try my patience and risk my wrath, but I will call the cops without any question at the first outburst, and if asked, will press charges, which will look really positive towards your future aspirations. I will be honest, several members of my family were very upset by that and felt very, well, very threatened by it. And I originally emailed Nancy Colal as a member of the planning commission a question because I knew she was very knowledgeable about the Aquifer in town, and she referred me to people and followed up with this in case the board does need it. I do have the full email conversation here if they need it. It seems pretty obvious, because at the last night's meeting, police officers were present outside, that this seemed to me a way for them to try and intimidate people and, well, frankly, into threatening them. Right. Into not speaking out against what the commission of the Eastlime depart, and the Eastlime zoning department is doing. Is this really the message that you want elected officials to be delivering to members of this town? Shut up, or you will be arrested? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, I don't know if they do want the copy of this one. I can leave it here with you.
Leave it with Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other delegations tonight? Yes, gentleman in the back. And of course, if you would identify yourself and your address, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Daniel Glenn, one oh three Flanders Road. First of all, I support everything the previous speakers spoke about, especially with regard to last night's special meeting. Last night, I was told I was only given two minutes to speak, so I gave an abbreviated version of what I'd like to present tonight.
We do have five minutes here.
Okay, that's exactly what this takes. Okay. I've been a Niantic resident since nineteen fifty-eight. I can actually remember when Eastlime was mostly woods. My grandfather and my father built about two dozen houses in town, including thirteen in Black Point. I attended the old Lily Behan School, which was torn down to make way for the middle school. I graduated from the Rhode Island School of Design with a Bachelor of Fine Arts and a Bachelor of Architecture. In nineteen eighty-five, I became a licensed architect. I designed and built our house on Flanders Road in nineteen eighty-nine. I worked for several architectural firms, including nineteen years at Centerbrook Architects, which in nineteen ninety-eight was named the number-one architectural firm in the country by the American Institute of Architects. The first project I worked on in that office was the Eastlime Community Center. In two thousand and nine, I opened my own office working from my home. I am quite familiar with the zoning regulations because I use them every time I design a project in town. Last year, I drew up plans for the new Cafe Soul, because the old Cafe Soul is planned to be torn down to make way for an oversized mixed-use monstrosity. The vast majority of townspeople spoke out against that project at numerous town, numerous public hearings, but the zoning official and prior commission appeared hell-bent on approving it, even if the regulations were ignored in the process. The project plan for the old Cafe Soul site was approved in error because it does not meet the minimum lot size requirements in section nine point three point one. According to the formula in that section, the planned eighteen-apartment mixed-use building is prohibited on a lot that small. The permit was granted anyway. This exemplifies the deliberate lax enforcement of the regulations, which has led to rampant overdevelopment in town. The question to ask the zoning official and the prior commission is this: Why, if the entire town tells you they don't want the project, and the regulations tell you it's not allowed, why then do you still approve it? The zoning official admits it was a mistake, but says the zoning approval cannot be rescinded. But the town can and should deny a building permit and a CO for a building that does not comply with the zoning regulations. Connecticut General Statutes, Chapter one twenty-four, Section eight dash twelve, provides the legal basis to terminate that project. I highly recommend that the Board of Selectmen look into this matter now and stop it in its tracks before the three existing buildings on that site are torn down. Related to this, I also wish to reiterate an issue I recently brought to the attention of the first selectman, the zoning official, the commission, and the Board of Finance. In January of twenty twenty, architectural design review regulations were put into place for downtown Niantic Village. Last month, Flanders Village was added as a second district subject to architectural design review. Section thirty-four point eleven point two point one requires that the town hire an architect to act as the village district consultant, to ensure that projects in these two districts comply with the architectural design review regulations. For the past four years, projects have been given zoning approvals without the oversight of a licensed architect. That position has been left vacant by the zoning official, the previous zoning commission, and the town for the past four years. Because of this vacancy, approvals have been granted by laymen with no architectural training, resulting in anomalies like the yellow behemoth known as the Norton, which will continue to diminish the streetscape of downtown Niantic for generations to come. A licensed architect would have clearly flagged section thirty-four point eight, which states, "With the objective of maintaining a small-town character, buildings should appear to be modest in scale, relating to the scale of the immediate surroundings." The Norton is so obviously out of scale with its neighbors, it is an architectural insult to the community. It is high time that the town of Eastlime fills the position of village district consultant so that the architectural integrity of downtown Niantic and Flanders Village is not further My main purpose in running for the zoning commission is to ensure that the zoning regulations are enforced and that more discipline and oversight is exercised in the approval process. I want to help Eastlime to improve and to be a beautiful and caring place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn.
Do you have your party affiliation, please?
Oh, Mr. Glenn, your party affiliation?
Democrat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for respecting our time constraint. Appreciate it. Are there any other people who would like to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
My name's.
Just your name and your address.
Yep.
Party affiliation.
Kathy Yuhas, twelve Lake Avenue Extension, Niantic. I'm Democrat. I was born and raised in the town of Eastlime, and I'm proud to say that I'm a product of an amazing school system here. I've been in Arlene for thirty-five years and, in some capacity, have cared for the residents of Eastlime. I'm also a Realtor, in the field for about ten years, starting out at Heritage Properties, which you now know as William Ravis. My father was a residential custom home builder, and I've been involved with many renovation projects personally over the years. So if you were to ask me why I'm interested in this position, it would be because of those two things. I've had the opportunity to live in other communities from the West Coast to the East Coast, but the pull to come home was too strong, so I've been back home for the last fourteen years because nowhere else has compared to living in Eastlime. You may think that being a nurse has nothing to do with zoning, but between that and being a Realtor, the two careers parallel, allowing me to bring my skills of listening, communication, observation, the ability to learn, and critical thinking to the position being applied for. Eastlime is such a beautiful town with a rich history and incredible community involvement. You can raise your kids here, you can retire here, as I choose to do, and Eastlime has given me so, so much to me, and now I want to give back. I'm invested in the people of Eastlime and the success of this town. I'm honest, my intentions are good, and I want to promote safety and contribute to the future vision and direction of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
And again, Ms. Yuhas, your party affiliation?
Democrat.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further delegations? Yes, you gentlemen.
Last thirty seconds, so my five minutes.
Of course.
Greg McIntyre, forty-one Shore Road, Democrat. I would like to echo what Nick Menapease said. The fact that there were two six-foot-four patrolmen fully dressed in battle gear outside the door at the meeting last night really set the tone. We knew when we walked in that somebody, and pretty much sure it was Nancy Colal, was expecting trouble. That was intimidating, and that was not required, and really was anti-democratic. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional delegations tonight? Mr. Pivo. And if you would, please, identify yourself and your address.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Gary Pivo for Colonial Drive, Eastlime. I'm not going to talk about the memos I've sent y'all. You'll be relieved to hear that. I know that you'll give them serious consideration. Just to say that they deal with legal, legally, the legal approach to electing and appointing officials in town, including the zoning commission. Of course, as the Supreme Court said, the right to vote is the preserver of all other rights, so it's critical that we follow the law when it comes to how we vote for, elect, and replace folks who are representing us. What I'd like to talk about very briefly is a broader concept related to this, which has to do with accurate representation in a representative democracy. As you know, our town, our state, our nation are representative democracies. The idea, what you may not know is that the founders of our democracy considered that the ideal representative democracy was one where the representatives accurately represent, that's the term, accurately represent the views of the voters they represent, so that we end up with a government of and by the people. And as it turns out, one of the best ways to preserve accurate representation is to fill vacancies with people from the same party that, of the persons that were vacating that position. It, there's a, I recently read a very interesting Law Review article by a Yale University professor who really went into this subject, and the key points he makes is that same-party appointments guarantee accurate representation because party is not just one of the most, but probably the single most important factor in predicting and understanding what people, voting behavior. While most people think that maybe people vote for the person, in reality, by far, most Americans, in local governments and national government elections, vote for the party. And so, simply put, voters should get what they voted for, and same-party appointments are the best way to ensure that. That's why most states and all the territories that require, or that allow for appointments in replacing vacancies require, most of these states require same-party appointments. Twice in the last two weeks, we've made appointments in zoning that do not follow this principle. I asked one of the members to explain that behavior to me. The answer was, in part, "Well, you know, elections are just marketing, they're more or less BS, we know better than the electorate about what's best." But even if that's true, that we're good, as representatives are good at helping to decide who might be a good replacement, we can blend that with the same-party representation, and surely, through efforts of outreach, we can find excellent people from the Republican Party, the Democratic Party, any of the minor parties, who could serve and come from the same party of the person that's vacating the post. So I hope you hold fast to the principle of same-party representation going forward. The right to vote is a fundamental right, as we all understand. It encourages people to vote and to participate in voting when they see that their vote matters and is respected, and their will is respected when replacements are made. And ignoring the will of the people only discourages people from voting. And that is one of the fastest ways to weaken our democracy. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Mr. Pivo, you're currently on the zoning commission?
That's correct. I'm currently on the zoning commission.
Are your remarks tonight, your own personal remarks?
Yes, ma'am.
As opposed to representing the zoning commission?
I am not representing the majority of the zoning commission at all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Thank you. Any further delegations tonight? And would you please identify yourself for the record and your address?
Norman Peck, thirty-two West Main Street. Been on the zoning board for a long time. I don't want to take up a lot of your time, I could say a lot, but I just want to say I would like to endorse this gentleman here, Mr. Valcek, as being assigned to the zoning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further delegations? Any further delegations? Any further delegations? Being none, we'll close that portion. Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of January third, 2024.
I move to approve the special meeting minutes of January third, 2024. I submit it.
Thank you. We have a second. Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? They appeared accurate to me. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is the consent calendar. Where is it? Here, okay. So we have in front of us tonight the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to accept it?
I move to approve the consent calendar for January seventeenth point twenty-four in the amount of seven thousand two hundred nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Roseanne?
I'll second.
Okay, I think we're good. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to turn to new business, and the first item on that agenda is appointments to boards and commissions.
I move to appoint Ryan Williams to Barrett Drive, Niantic, to serve as a member on the Inland Wetlands Agency on behalf of the town of Eastlime with a term to expire on January fifth, 2026.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Don. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of approving Ryan Williams to serve, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries, and Ryan will be the new alternate for the Inland Wetlands Agency. Thank you.
I move to appoint Tom Colal of eighty Grassy Hill Road, Eastlime, to serve as an alternate member of the Inland Wetlands Agency on behalf of the town of Eastlime with a term to expire on January third, 2028.
Let's see. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Roseanne, seconds. Do I hear, is there any discussion? Being none. Those in favor of the motion to appoint Tom Colal, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none, the motion carries. Congratulations, Tom.
I move to appoint Paul Vicenti of fourteen Round Rock Road, Niantic, to serve as a member on the Board of Police Commissioners on behalf of the town of Eastlime with a term to expire on January third, 2028.
Do I hear a second? Roseanne, thank you. All right, well, I can, discussion, I know Paul, I've known him from the, being at the bus stop with me in the morning, when I put my grandson on the bus, and I can say I think he would be a great member of the police commission, so that's my pitch.
All right, does he have any?
Does he have any police experience? I didn't see a resume for him.
No. I don't believe he does. He is a, he is a jet pilot, and a serious fellow, and, and I think he's open-minded, as far as I know.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Great. Congratulations to Paul.
I move to appoint Tom.
Hold on, what's his last name? Paul Vicenti.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I move to appoint Tom Beebe of seventeen Islandia Court, Niantic, to serve as a member on the Parks and Recreation Commission on behalf of the town of East Line with a term to expire on January third, 2028.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Great. Thank you. All right. Any currently serves? Any further discussion on Tom Beebe? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The motion carries. Thank you.
I move to appoint Todd Donovan of twenty-three Sandpiper Lane, East Line, to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission on behalf of the town of East Line with a term to expire on January third, 2028.
Do I hear, we have a second with Roseanne. Thank you, Roseanne. Any further discussion on Todd Donovan's appointment? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Being none, the motion carries. Congratulations, Todd. All right.
I move to appoint Ben Armstrong, twelve Naomi Lane, East Line, to serve as a member on the Parks and Recreation Commission on behalf of the town of East Line with a term to expire on January third, 2028.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roseanne, thank you. Any, any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of appointing Ben Armstrong, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none, the motion carries, and Ben Armstrong is appointed. The next, okay, let's see. Now we're going to move, actually, we kind of set it out as a separate line item in new business, but I guess it really didn't have to be. We are now appointing an alternate to the zoning commission, and we've heard from several individuals tonight that are interested. Do I hear a motion to appoint any of the individuals represented that they would wish to serve?
I move to appoint Daniel Glynn of one oh three Flanders Road, Niantic, to serve as an alternate member of the zoning commission on behalf of the town of East Line with a term to expire on December first, 2025.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Being none, we should move on.
Before we go to the next list, I noticed that Ms. Yuhas's name is not on this list, and she appeared this evening.
Right.
With a statement and with a biography, so.
Did you wish to move?
I would like to appoint her, I mean, I would move to appoint Kathy Yuhas. And I'm sorry, I don't have the address, because I assumed it would be here on the list.
Yeah. Okay.
I'd like to second.
So we have a second for Kathy Yuhas?
Yes. The reason that I, I thought very carefully about this, we had several very, all of our candidates were well-qualified, but considering some of the comments that have been paid, have been made, I think perhaps it's time for a fresh look at the zoning commission, and perhaps select someone who is new to the commission, and perhaps will have some different ideas.
Okay. Any additional comment regarding Kathy Yuhas's desire to be on the board?
If you don't mind, I would like to fully support what Roseanne just said. I think that is kind of a reflection of her.
Okay. Thank you, Candace. Any further discussion? Then let's move it. Those in favor of appointing Kathy Yuhas as an alternate, signify by, I'm sorry.
Did we do Mr. Valcheck?
Well, no.
Okay. All right. Let's replace you.
We're going.
Yes, thank you.
Through one, yeah, okay. So, those in favor of Kathy Yuhas being appointed, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Being none, the motion carries. Congratulations, Kathy.
Wow.
There you go. All right.
And a thank you for all the people who expressed an interest in this.
Yes. Candidates.
And I hope that they will continue to contribute.
Okay. All right. That takes care of new business for tonight. Turning to old business, the status of the Cheney fishing dock leases. Any, any movement on that, or do we need to table that for another meeting?
Yes, we need to table that. We have not had an opportunity to meet. This term around, we've had a number of subcommittees appointed, but following this meeting, the three of us will meet to decide on a date, and then one of us will contact the leases to.
That would be good.
To, to discuss with them their issues.
That sounds good. All right. So we'll table it for, before I put it on the next agenda, why don't I check in to see if there's been any thought with the.
I see that Chris is here. Do you want to hear from him or not? From what? Do we just, does he have anything to say, or are you going to say it?
It's on, you know, it's, you know, it should have been done during the delegation.
Okay.
But we'll just table it, and we'll wait till next time.
Thanks.
Okay. The next, the next area is ex officio reports. So, Roseanne, do we have anything?
I do not this evening. We've heard from the zoning candidates this evening, and I don't have anything additional at this time. And Commission of Natural Resources, nothing particular there. They've been talking about their budget requests, and Commission on Aging likewise. So that's my report.
Okay. Thank you.
Pretty much a non-record.
Thank you. Jason, anything?
Well, I think I can outdo you for non-record, because my only meeting was canceled. The Harvard Management Selfish Commission was canceled last night.
Okay. Thank you.
I think everybody's just trying to get off a good start in the new year.
Yeah.
Trying to get our act together.
Well, I can report, the police commission meeting, which I'm ex officio, was canceled, so I have nothing to report there. Board of Finance, I attended the Board of Finance meeting, it's ex officio, they approved their calendar for the upcoming year, so that's of record. If anyone wants, they can be sure with the dates, and they can attend. I updated the Board of Finance on the seawall repair at McCooks. It managed to withstand the latest storm, so thankful for that. I also updated them on the status of the water supply and the PFAS issue with the water, and how it might impact future budgets, so, so they can be aware of what might be coming down the road. Also expressed to them that as we move into the budget season, you know, my, my feeling and my focus is, we need to take care of what we have. You know, we have buildings that need roofs that have leaks, we have parks that need fields that have to be repaired. We need to take care of what's already on our plate before we come up on any big projects and initiatives, so, once we do that, then if there's money left over, then we can start looking at new projects. But we have to be able to take care of what we have. So, that was one thing. The other thing that we have to, we have to start putting money away for a rainy day. And there's an idea to have a coastal resiliency fund, and as we saw this past season, you know, the seawall went in, and I'm sure everyone's seen on the news, you know, devastation up in Maine and other coastal areas. I don't know if you believe in global warming or not, I don't want to get into that discussion, but something's going on. Maybe it's just the weather. But something's going on, and we have to look forward, and we have to be ready for it. And so, we have to start putting money aside for coastal resiliency. I'm going to suggest that to the Board of Finance, I'm going to push for it. And it will also help us down the road. Having a coastal resiliency fund will improve our bond rating, and that will save us a lot of money over the long term. So we have to start thinking about those things, being fiscally careful, and so I'm, I suggested that to them. So.
Well, I'm very happy to hear that, because this, if we have a set organization committee in plan, this will make us eligible for additional financing. Federal financing. And I should have also commented that the Commission of Natural Resources is very concerned about this also.
Yeah.
And would want to, several members would like to meet with you.
I'd be happy to.
To see what, we could discuss.
Well, the future's here, and so we better be getting ready for it.
The future is the present.
Yep. So, that's, that's my, that was my report to Board of Finance, and that is my ex officio report. Thank you. Don?
Planning Commission, I attended a meeting, learned a ton. The biggest topic was an application for subdivision for a four-lot subdivision on four point two seven acres on property at two twenty Pennsylvania Avenue. Tons of questions were asked and answered. What was, the vote was passed to proceed to zoning. I think it went very well. There was early discussion regarding the process of filling vacancies. I think that's based on what we had tonight, something we should take a look at. And also, one day last week, I spent the date at the Capitol as a new, new politician, going through systems and procedures, and it was quite, quite a good class on ethics, on cybersecurity, on freedom of information, and things like that about routines and processes. And I was asked earlier about my, my position on should we get cyber insurance, and I'm not sure yet, but however, I talked to a very small town who has it, and I said absolutely. And also talked to a large town, a little bit larger than this town, and they have it as well. So that's something we should take a look at. So, but it was, it was, first I thought I was wasting a day, but by no means was I. So it was good. Thanks. That's great. Thank you.
Any ex officio report?
Yes. So first, I just want to thank everybody for coming in. I'm running from a wrestling tournament, so I just wanted everyone to know that I tuned in at seven o'clock, I listened to everyone, and was present in our meeting. And thank you for your understanding of the Zoom and being present. The Historical Society has not had a meeting yet, so I did not attend this month, but I do see that they put one on for next month. I attended the legislative breakfast on January fifth, hosted by the East Line School District at the East Line Middle School. That was focusing state-level unfunded mandates, the implementation challenges with the mandated reading program across the state, and also, they discussed the possibility of decreasing in, the decrease, excuse me, in funding for education for the upcoming budget. So that's something that people should be tuning in to. The other meeting I attended was the Youth and Family and Human Services Commission, so this is the new commission.
Yes.
I hope that I did not mangle that name. Did I get it right? Good.
I think so.
And, you know, officially, I don't believe that we have appointed someone. I had asked, not the last meeting, but maybe the meeting before, if we were going to be doing that. And certainly, I show interest in being that person. However, I attended because I was going to Park and Rec, and it was being held right beforehand. So I did sit in. They had a great lineup of events that they have planned. They, it was their first meeting, so they did a chair, and secretary, and all of that, and they're getting established and doing a great job. Park and Rec, they are in discussions over setting the rates, and looking at a five to ten percent increase across the board. And then, of course, the two members, but they were reappointed, from what I heard. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Candace. Let's see, for our, for our, oh. Ann, do you have anything you wanted to offer?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, the Inland Wetlands Agency meeting was last night, and that was canceled, and I just had the library meeting, and the main issue there was basically, they're, I guess, still waiting for the feasibility plan from the architects, and that involves the renovation of the community center. So that was basically at that point.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ann. Thanks for your attendance.
Sure.
Okay. I did, I, do we have any further ex officio reports? Okay. So I want to back up a little bit. I passed over a discussion of the police commission ordinance, so I wanted to revisit So I, I've included, I think everyone has a copy, and what I'm interested in, and what I'd like the board to look at, and I'm looking for feedback, the, the appointment of the board, it states that they cannot be reappointed, so there is a term limit. Terms are as follows: Three terms to be filled by appointment of four years until January 2022, and then, which terms expire, January 2024, which is now. Members of the Board of Police Commission may serve no more than two consecutive terms. A member who has served two consecutive terms may not be reappointed until four years have elapsed of his or her most recent term. So, unlike some of the other boards, we don't have term limits on the other boards, as far as I know. Am I correct in that, as far as, Roseanne, do you think I'm, I think that's correct?
I don't know of any.
Yeah. And so, we have a, you know, they've done a great job, the existing board, our police department is, is prospering, and they have, I think, done a great job as we moved into, you know, having the new police station, our public safety complex. So, I, I don't want to be in a situation where we have to appoint all new members, and we lose all the history on, on the police commission. So, I, I have a feeling that by natural attrition, people want to move on, that we will see change on the police commission. I know one resignation that is pending, and others that, you know, want to do something else. But I would like, and I think it would be worthwhile, at least have the flexibility to reappoint members that still want to serve, that have done a good job. We still have the ability to not appoint them, if we feel that, for whatever reason that's inappropriate, that they continue to serve. So what I'm asking the board to do is to look over this section of the ordinance, and see if you would agree that it might make sense to remove the term limits, and maybe come up with some language, just instead of four-year terms, maybe have, you know, a two-year term, and a, and a three-year term, and a four-year term. So, they get staggered, and we have the ability to appoint people without totally wiping out the board and having all new people that don't have history. So, I don't really want to do anything with this tonight, but I wanted to do this in the open meeting, so everybody is aware.
Well, this is a new commission, fairly new commission.
Yes.
And this is the first time that terms have really been expiring.
Right.
And with any first-time effort, hopefully we learn. And I, I think it, I think the whole board should review this. We shouldn't have a subcommittee. The whole board should look at this, because it's certainly very important to the safety and welfare of the town.
I agree. Thank you. So, with that in mind, I would ask, I don't have much more to say about it for tonight. I would ask board members, I made a copy for you to take with you, and let's review it, and then perhaps at the next meeting, we can come up with a draft of proposed language, and see, and see what the feeling is. Let's take the temperature of the board and see what people think.
Can you refresh my memory, how many people are currently on that commission?
I believe, Sandy, do you know? Is it seven? I think it is. Yeah. I think it is seven. And we just appointed someone tonight to the police commission. So, right now, they will have, we figured this out, they will have a quorum, so they can, they can transact business as they need to in the short term. But I think we do need to deal with this. We have some time to do it, because they have a quorum. We have some time to do it because they have a quorum. But I think it's something we need to look at and consider. And let's just see what everybody thinks.
Well, with your experience working with this committee, do you, as well, as long as we're looking at revisions, do you feel that seven members is still a good number? Or if we're going to stagger terms, should we consider increasing the number to an even number?
You know, I think it's good to have an odd number maybe, so when they vote. And it seems that seven has worked out well and I don't know if it's easy or hard to get people that want to serve on the Police Commission, but that's something that we can consider. And if, you know.
Well, I've not had occasion to attend any of those meetings, so.
It seems, it seems workable. I think seven is a good number. It's an odd number. But, you know, it seems like they've done a good job and they're able to move business that they have to take care of. So, I don't have any great impetus one way or the other to make it five or make it nine or, you know, whatever number everyone thinks is a good number. Seven seems to work. But again, I'll leave that up to this Board to look at it and let's have suggestions for our next meeting. And then, based on those suggestions, I'll ask Council to draft a new Section A of the ordinance.
Could we have a sample, look at how this, if we were to do the change, could we have a sample presented to us at the next meeting as to how this might play out in terms of appointments?
I, I could, I mean, I don't want to make any presumptions of what the Board might think. I'm happy to, maybe I could come up with a couple of potential drafts.
Well, a couple of configurations as to how this might work out.
Sure, let me try to do that, come up with a couple of different configurations on how it might work. And then we can discuss. And if one of them looks like maybe we nailed it, then we can, we can vote on it. If not, we'll just continue it till we get it right and till everybody is satisfied that we cut the right idea. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then I'll, we'll check that box.
I was also wondering, under reports, did anyone have occasion to attend the short-term rental committee meeting?
Yes. Forgive me, Dan. I just, I went last night, yes. I'm sorry. And yes, they are looking at gathering some more information and coming forward somewhere, hopefully in February to March, to address the Board of Selectmen. They have a public hearing coming up on the 29th and then they will meet afterwards. So they're still gathering information. They had some information given by the town attorney as well. And then, of course, waiting for the Supreme Court to, you know, kind of make some, some decisions there. But some really good conversations between the members, for sure. And they're, they're going through their task very well.
Okay. I guess, all right, in other ex officio reports? I will make the first Selectmen's report. As I already mentioned, happy to report that the seawall is held up. And, you know, there was another storm after, and now there's been about three storms, serious storms. It's remarkable, I think. But it's holding. We're trying to figure out what the timeframe will be for making the permanent repair. There's some funding issues. It's going to be expensive to do. So, we're considering bonding. If, I guess, the thought right now is that if we think it's going to continue to hold up for a few months, it might be well to try to do it on the next budget cycle and to, you know, plan for it. And then maybe actually start doing the work in September rather than having a pile driver while everybody's trying to relax on the beach driving 20-foot sheet piles into the beach. So, that's sort of the thought. There's some risk. Let's hope that the, we don't get another huge storm and it dismantles our temporary wall. But, you know, it's survived so far, so let's hope that it continues to. And that's what we're thinking about right now. Trying to maybe take a little bit of a chance, but it'll make it easier to pay for doing it that way.
Dan, may I ask a question on that?
Yes, of course.
I thought that we were going to be looking into any available funds from the state also and the possibility of, if we fell into disaster relief.
So, yeah, that's a question, the Governor's Office, they are collecting data right now on the most recent storm. And they're considering disaster relief, so it would make FEMA money available. And there's two branches to FEMA money. There is individual FEMA applications. I don't know if your duck gets wiped out of your house. And then there's municipal applications for FEMA. I don't think there was enough damage in enough places for that particular storm that took out our wall to be designated a disaster. So, and now with this other recent flooding, it's, I think that has eclipsed our problem with the wall.
Okay.
You know, with what's going on in Norwich with the dams. And that was a topic I brought up before. I know Kevin Gervais said, "Stop talking because every time you talk, it seems that it happens somewhere the next week." So, but, you know, I'm on, we got to stay on that to be sure. The other thing I need to mention, sadly, as everybody knows, there was a fatal fire last week in Eastlime. And I'm sure I speak for the entire Board, extending our condolences to the family members that lost, you know, that died in that fire. I also want to thank our firefighters and the other first responders that responded. You know, they went into a burning building to rescue somebody. And not everybody is able to do that. And they were, and they did. And we really owe them a debt of gratitude for their bravery and willingness to do that. So, thank you to our firefighters and all that were involved in that, in that effort.
And the fact that we had mutual aid from other communities as well.
We did, all over. I mean, there were trucks from, or Stonington, Sabre, Colchester was, the mechanics of the fire, it was a fire and they needed to be, there's no hydrants in that area. So we have to, had to fight it with tanker trucks. And so, there's a mutual aid agreement. When, when it was that type of fire, they all start sending their tanker trucks. They start heading towards, you know, it's Eastlime. They all start heading towards Eastlime so they can have a relay and keep water going. So, yeah, so thank you to our firefighters. What else to report? We're still working on the water problem. I reported that before. I think that we didn't receive quite as much inquiry from citizens as I thought we might have. And I think in part it's because, you know, we're really doing our best to be transparent and with the citizens in town. And I think that effort is showing that people, we have a high level of credibility, this Board, and they trust us. And we put the word out as soon as we could and we're taking all steps that we can to manage the problem. It's, it's not going to be an inexpensive fix, but we will, we will deal with that as we must. And I will report further down the road as, as we know more. And I think that's it for me, for tonight, for the Selectmen's report. I don't know of any communications. Does anyone have any communications that I'm not aware of? I don't think we have any. Any further, any public comment? I know we had delegations earlier, but is there public comment? I will then, the Selectmen's response. I want to respond to all those that took the time earlier in delegations to comment on the recent appointments. I'm certainly, I'm listening. I'm taking it into consideration and I think it warrants a referral to legal counsel to get their opinion on what transpired and what their position is. And so, I will do that. And I think, I think I owe that to the citizens in town to have it looked at by another person, another entity, and get their opinion and to see what they think happened and whether or not we need to take some corrective action. So, I will pursue that. The next section then is, we're going to go into executive session to discuss real estate matters, so at this time. And then afterwards, we'll be adjourning. So, that will be closed.
Mr. Selectman, I'd like to move to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing real estate matters, Hathaway Property.
One second.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay.